Recording has started.
Great, thank you. Well, I'd like to welcome everybody to the September 7th, 2022 Design Review Commission Meeting. Let's go ahead and establish our quorum. When I say your name, if you can just say here, Frank Bishop.
Here.
Sam Harding.
Here.
Jude Kirk.
Here.
Michael Ma.
Yeah.
And David Blockus. So we have all five commissioners here tonight. Sean, do we have any public comments that aren't on the agenda?
If there is a member of the public who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, please raise your hand. If you cannot raise your hand or cannot find the location, raise your hand, please unmute yourself and provide your name and we'll take you in the order that you list yourself. We do not have any raised hands. We do not have any unmuted individuals. Except for Teresa Yu. Teresa Yu, did you wish to speak on an item not on the agenda?
No, I don't. I do not.
As a reminder, please, if you're not a member of the commission or staff, please mute yourself. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and move forward with items for consideration and action. The consent calendar. Do I have any, or a motion in regards to last time, August 17th? Commission meeting minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes of August 17th.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get everyone on record. Commissioner Bishop.
Aye.
Commissioner Harding.
Aye.
Commissioner Kirk.
Aye.
Commissioner Ma.
Aye.
And Commissioner Blockus as well, so that passes 5-0. We'll go ahead and move on to our public hearing for first item, which is as part of the hearing, but item number two on the agenda meeting minutes. The property at 725 University Avenue, we're looking at a variance B22-0002. Staff, do we have a report on that, please?
Yes, one second, let me get this up on the screen for you. Good, good evening Chair Blockus. Let me, sorry, you're all hiding. Sorry, it does weird things when I'm doing presentations. There we go. Good evening Chair Blockus and Commissioners. My name is Sean Gago, Senior Planner at the city of Los Altos. The project before is design review application for alterations to a 403 square foot accessory structure on a designated historic resource property site at 725 University. The applicant is proposing a variance application for reduction of the front yard setback where the normal setback is 25 feet. The scope of work also includes designer view for a 63 square foot addition to a one-story accessory structure, garage, and exterior alterations to the exterior side and rear of the accessory structure, including demolition of 85 square feet for a total accessory structure of 403 square feet. Let me try. The site, which the commission's had before, before you in the past, is 725 University on the corner of Lee Street and University Avenue. This is the site plan, which is on sheet SA1. Again, this is an application for a proposed addition that is occurring along the exterior side and the rear of the structure, a proposed demolition off of the back of the structure. It is proposing a reduced setback to allow an extension of the garage structure towards the exterior side. This structure is an existing historic resource built in 1911 and they're looking to expand the structure to allow for a use of the garage, which currently is a very narrow garage, which does not allow for full access and use of the garage. With regard to the advisory review, the historical commission on September 7th approved the historic advisory review. They met the permit findings for it under section 1244140. As part of the packet, I also provided you the Secretary of the Interiors report. That was part of the historical commission staff report. They did find that they met all of the Secretary of the Interior standards. And this is in the reports, I won't go over it, but there are a series of criteria, a total of 10, and they have complied with that, and that is the basis for the historical commission approval. Again, this is the site plan showing the location of the existing structure, the proposed section of addition and demolition. This proposed provides a close-up. This is on the left is the existing structure. This section is a nonhistoric addition to the structure that's being removed. This is the existing garage. And then this is the proposed portion that's being demolished. In regards to the garage, as you can see, garage is currently 19 and a half feet by 17 feet deep. The proposal is to increase the overall depth to 19 six with a 22 and a half foot width, which will meet and exceed the minimum parking space requirement of 18 by 18. Previously, at a 17 and a quarter length, it did not meet the minimum depth for our parking space per our parking standards. This is the, you know, the project, you know, this does show in these red lines, locations of the addition. This is location of the existing structure. They're looking to expand this addition towards towards University Avenue and adding this additional area and this additional portion of the roof. This also shows it from the rear side of the structure. And again, this is the addition that's proposed. And then it also shows the proposed additions off the right and left side. I conveyed on sheet A1.3. The structure does meet the maximum height requirement. It does not exceed 12 feet. As an accessory structure, the project will include high-quality materials consistent with the existing structures, such as the composition roof, painted wood shingle siding and wood windows and doors. Overall, staff believes the project has architectural integrity, design materials are compatible with the existing structure and with the overall neighborhood. The project is consistent with residential design guidelines, required findings, and the neighborhood context, therefore staffs in support of this minor modification and variance for the successor structure. On the variance findings, commission is required to to approve the variance findings for this project if they can support the project. The granting of the variance is consistent with the objectives of the zoning plan by maintaining and continuing the existing non-conforming setback, which still ensure the zoning code's objective or harmonious convenient relationship among other properties which have existed in this location since 1911, when the residence and accessory structure were constructed. The addition will maintain the existing non-conforming accessory structure, which is not permitted in a required front yard per the zoning code section as stated in the staff report. That the granting of the variance will not be detrimental to persons in living or working in the vicinity, to any projects in the vicinity, because it is a family home. The proposed addition has been designed to have appropriate relationships with the surrounding properties. And the persons living or working in these surrounding areas would not further impact the relationships of the structure to surrounding properties. Sorry about that. And then granting of the variance will allow the applicant to maintain the historic accessory structure that was permitted in 1911. That the granting of the variance will not diminish the historic setting. It'll maintain the viability of the historic structure and not detract from the visual character of the structure. That the special circumstances applicable to this property is that the house was previously approved. Or the structure was previously approved as a one-story structure with the primary ridge. I mean, with the front of the structure and true encroaching into the front setback, that the height of the structure will be maintained or will be below the maximum permitted height of 12 feet. The zoning code allows for non-conforming residential structures to be altered or enlarged if such change did not increase the level of non-conformity or intensify the level of non-conformity. And the variance will allow for the existing structure to be altered where the strict application of the code would require the accessory structure to be maintained as existing. Staff does, as indicated in staff report, support and recommends approval of the variance application subject to the findings conditions in the agenda report. The application, the applicant's variance justification letter is provided as attachment B in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation. Was there any questions?
Great, thank you Sean. Commissioners, any questions for staff?
None.
Steve, Jude, Mike?
No question.
I have to ask a question. Sean, was there any other alternative options explored as part of this process, or was this the sole solution proposed by the applicant?
I am not aware of them. So as part of the review process with staff, we did not pursue or recommend any design alternatives. And I'm not aware if the applicant considered them. The applicant is present tonight, Danielle Divitoria, and she could potentially answer that question.
Okay. First of all, the site plan is very difficult to read, just. And I'm curious. Most of the garages, I'm very familiar with that stretch of university and the alley. Was there an option to, in your opinion, to locate a new detached garage off the alley in the opposite corner of the property? And bring, as part of that, tear down the non-compliant structure and build one that's compliant, fully compliant off the alley in that back corner?
There is the potential that they could build a different garage, a new garage, if they, if they so wanted to pursue that. You could not demolish the garage. It's a historic resource. It would require an environmental analysis if you were to propose the demolition of a historic resource.
So the garage itself is considered a historic?
Yes, it is considered part of the historic resource for the site. It's both the combination of the house and the garage. The garage was never, is our understanding in the, in the report from the historian was that the garage at that time period when it was built, there were very few garages for vehicles. So it's a good example of that type of structure that existed at the time for people that had garages in 1911 for cars. So it's very uncommon to have a garage of this type that exists today still, you know, over 100 years later. So if we were to demolish it or propose that, one, it would require environmental review. It would be considered a significant environmental effect if you demolish a historic structure. And it would require an action by city council after review of environmental report by both the DRC and potentially the planning commission, historical commission, and an action by council of a statement of overriding consideration to prove a demolition of a historic structure. When there's not really a potential reason to demolish it, since the code does allow for existing non-conforming structures to be maintained, as long as they're not removing more than 50% of the structure.
Well, thank you for that answer.
Thank you, sorry.
Hey, hey Dave.
Yep.
This is, this is Frank. You continue to call me Steve. So.
Oh, is that, I'm sorry, Frank.
So, yeah, okay, I have no questions.
Okay.
Other than, other than I like it as a historical garage. So that's more of a statement than a question.
I, I have a couple of questions. Normally with variances and whatnot, I don't know how many have we had. I'm not really familiar with ones done on historical property, because we're adding, we're kind of changing the property. And I know in the write-up and the reading and looking at it, it doesn't look to be that big of a issue, but should something happen to the garage or whatever, it obviously would not be able to be built back as a garage in that position. Is that correct?
Sorry, it is correct, yes. So if, if, if for some reason the garage either deteriorated to condition where it needed to be demolished, or it was destroyed in some way, they would not be able to recreate the garage in a similar location. They would have to build the garage to be compliant with current standards. Restoration is, is the reconstruction of a garage to replicate a previous historic resource is typically the last resort and is not recommended by historians. So we would not potentially support the reconstruction of the garage in the same place. It wouldn't meet the zoning code standards. And it would be inconsistent with established historical, you know, historic preservation norms.
Okay, and then my second question is more of a practical one. There is kind of in that corner that's going to be doubly expanded. So the back and the right corner. You know, if you're facing the garage, the back right, that expands out about two feet in each direction approximately. There is currently a large new above grade deck going out the backside of the property. That my concern is, A, I don't really see it on the plans, but B, the roof line of the garage in the corner of that deck look fairly close to each other to where someone either on the deck or maybe walking around that area could be hitting their heads or whatnot. So do we have numbers that show? A, is there a certain code requirement that says you can't build a structure with a five foot above grade where the roof line may be at, you know, if that patio deck is, say, four feet above grade and you have a roof that's eight feet that grade and you have pitch coming down to the corner, it might be that that pitch is two and a half feet into the deck. You know, from a height standpoint.
So we, so we, so no, no, we didn't. I mean, the only applicable standard for, per zoning code is the minimum separation standard, which from the outer edge of the structure to the accessory structure, it meets the minimum 10-foot standard. We measure to the, to the building face or to the foundation. And we, you know, we have the architect and they could potentially speak to that question on whether there may be a potential conflict between the height of the deck and then the, the lower portion of the eve and whether it may conflict with someone standing there.
Okay, okay. I have no further questions. Why don't we go ahead and move to the applicant? So it's applicant, it's your time. You can speak and/or your architect designer. So your time is up. You have 10 minutes.
Okay, thanks so much. Hi, everyone. Apologies if I sniff or sneeze in the middle of this. I really appreciate this being virtual since I happen to have a cold. Thanks for taking the time to review this. You may remember that a bit more than two years ago, we came to you with our proposal for remodeling the house here, and you approved that, which we greatly appreciated. Thanks to COVID delays and supply chain delays, things like that. The remodel took a lot longer than we expected, but we were incredibly excited to move in just a few weeks ago. It's so great to finally be part of the neighborhood. And we can't wait to participate in Halloween around here, coming up fairly soon. Last fall is, we were getting closer to moving in. We stared at the garage and realized that despite being described to us as a two-car garage when it was sold, that fitting two cars in that would actually be incredibly challenging. That was, that's much more of an issue for us now than it was last fall, and we were worried about it then, because we're actually expecting twins in the next six weeks. So we're going to have to get somewhat larger cars than we have right now. And we, we'd really love to have a place to fit those. We're really glad, very lucky that we have the square footage to spare on the lot in a non-historical portion of the historical garage. That'll be enough to make it wider. And of course, we'll, you know, we'll make these changes in a way that does not change the design or style of the garage. It's been really great to have the support of Sean and Nastine and city staff along the way. And to get the positive feedback that we got from the historical commission. So I hope we can get your support as well. Danielle was our architect and she'll talk you through a few more of the details.
Thank you, Eric. Hi, everyone. Hi Commissioners. Danielle Divitorio, I'm the architectural designer on this project. I do have a PowerPoint. However, Sean went through most of it, so I don't want to be repetitive, especially because we are on a time restriction. I am going to share it because I do want to make one point about the design, so you guys can see it in a rendering, and then I will try and address all the questions that have been brought up. I'm going to share my screen quickly. This is the main one. As you can see here, here's the existing garage. Here is the rendering that we are proposing. So yes, it is, we are expanding to the side, but we are trying to preserve it as much as possible. And these exposed rafters, we will preserve that because the historic design is what we are, you know, keeping in consideration as much as we can. And then to go to the questions, one of them brought up was, have we thought about proposing a different location on the site? So we wouldn't be sitting in this 25-foot setback. And yes, we have. However, we are at the max lot coverage that we can propose for this house. Because of that, you know, we, that's one of the reasons we had to figure out if the shed was historic. It was not, so we were able to remove that and use that square footage because we are in that crunch. So unfortunately, unless we were to, you know, take it down, which we can't do because of the historic resource, we couldn't propose another location. And then based on another question that was brought up was the distance from the rear deck. The rear deck was constructed recently during construction. So I can't, I can't say I have the exact dimensions of it, because I don't know if the GC built it exactly to the plans. If they did, the cornermost point of that deck is about five feet, six inches from the new corner of the garage. We have 20-foot eaves or 20, 24-inch eaves, two-foot eaves. So that being said, there's still a three-foot clearance between the cornermost point of the deck and then the eve. So I don't think it would be too much of a head concern, just because they would have to lean over a good amount to hit that eve. And then I don't know if there was one more question, but I answered the two that were there.
We'll, we'll have questions at the end of your presentation, so go ahead and continue if you want.
Great. And the rest of the presentation was strictly, I was going to go through, we are removing this, you know, just the back square footage. And then adding on, I don't want to repeat or waste any time because Sean did a great job going through it. Again, site plan here, we did propose, you all received the variance justification letter. Myself, as well as the homeowners, we thoroughly went through this to make sure we were meeting each point. I'm not proposing something that wasn't going to be used. Like Eric said, we, you know, got different car models and tried to figure out, could we fit two cars in this garage with the electric vehicle chargers? And it just wasn't possible. We ended up finding a car that, you know, worked if we got two of them with the addition, just because it doesn't meet that minimum garage size as is. So we really did go through this thoroughly. You all have that letter. And then again, the renderings and existing. That is all.
Sorry, I was muted. Do the owners wish to make any further comments?
Nope.
Okay, we'll go ahead and Commissioner, any questions at this point?
None.
Frank has a question.
Right.
So as I, as I look at the garage door that's on the building and in the drawing, is that the garage door you're planning on going with?
The, the plan is to stick with the garage door that matches the current style. Yes.
So I guess the question I'm asking would be, you know, part of the statement early on was from Sean that the, it's one of the few garages from that time period, that would not be the door that would be on a garage from that time period, correct?
That is correct.
So was there any consideration giving, given to some type of a door that would be more, you know, of a period correct door than what you're suggesting?
I can't say we considered that mostly just with our conversation with Charlie Duncan, the historic, when he did the whole review, the letters of Secretary of Interiors. It was more just to match existing. And I know that garage door that is on it is not historic, but.
No, most garage doors from that time period actually were on hinges and opened outwards as doors, but you can get a roll-up door that looks like that. I think that would greatly improve the front facade of the building. Something to consider. It's my question if that had been, that had been considered as part of the project. I think it would be a a good update, but I'll leave it there for now.
Thanks. That did, it come up, I think, as a public comment in the historical commission meeting and and, yeah. The historical commission left it as a comment and did not add it as a condition, but it's, it's a good comment to have. We wouldn't want to be in a position where we make a change and then create a historical issue. And so in that sense, it's easier to match existing. But I, I don't have a great sense of whether making a change like that would prove to be okay or not from a historical standpoint.
I don't think it would be any problem at all, actually, but everyone can pick their garage door. Anyway, that's my thought on it. I think it would improve the building greatly if you went to something that was different. That looks like a basic steel roll-up door to me, right? Is that what it is?
Yes.
Yeah.
I do know with historic, Sean, Sean, you can talk to this if you want. There's a thing called false replica and we really.
I served on the historical commission.
Okay.
Very much aware of what that is. I'm just asking if the door can be improved from what it is today.
Commissioner Bishop, so, so I do believe that if the commission wanted to require an appropriate door for it, they could potentially condition that the applicant work with their, with the project historian to, to replace the door with an appropriate door for that time period. Now, that may require the historian to look at previous photographic examples of, of the doors that were on that, and I don't know if they would have photographic proof, because typically when you're looking at replacing or replicating original replacing material or details on a structure, you try to go first to historical records.
Right.
So the historian has done a series of multiple reports on it, so they can always look at that. If necessary, they can always recommend not a replica, they can, they can recommend a time period appropriate.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, Sean, exactly. Yeah, a time period door. I mean, the door that's on it looks like it's from the 1980s, right? So.
No, no, false historicism, which is what she talked about, is when you try to recreate something that never existed on a structure. And if that door was originally not consistent with the original, with the original structure that was there, and they're replacing it with a similar type, then that would be false historicism. It would only be false historicism if it never existed and they're just adding it.
I agree with you. That's clearly not from that time period whatsoever. So I'll leave my comment there and hear what everyone else on the commission has to say. And I do like the detail of the rafters. I'm glad you're keeping those.
Thanks, and I appreciate the feedback on the door to be clear, you know. It, it would be nice to, you know, to not have a requirement to have a door that would be complicated to use or something like that, but you know, the style of the door is not one that we are particularly passionate about.
Understood. And I think what you'll find is in a roll-up door, you can still feel the convenience of that type, that type of a door. But you can have a look that would look much better on that wood shingle building when you're all done, so.
Absolutely.
Those are my thoughts. You're welcome.
Thanks so much.
Yeah.
Thank you, Frank. Jude or Michael, any questions?
Well, I'm, my only questions, well, first of all, my question regarding looking at other options has been answered by the clarification that the garage itself is historic and cannot be removed, but I am a little bit confused. First of all, the drawings that we've received are very faint site plan wise, and And, you know, dimensionally, I see a 12 foot dimension in a 20 something. Dimension, is that correct? 27 feet? To the arch, architect or designer, is that correct? What are those dimensions relating to? And how does that apply to the, the new, there is a new deck, I understand?
Yes.
Describe the new deck.
That deck was part of the remodel that was done and approved back in 2020, Eric saying he just moved. I'm actually looking at my screen right now. I apologize that they were, the ones printed that you guys have received were faint. The dimension that you're seeing, the 12 foot 10 and a quarter inch, that's to the corner of the house. So that's structure to accessory structure garage. The 27 foot two is to another dimension of the house. The rear deck, your set that you have, that isn't measured out just because it, it wasn't asked for. I apologize for that from the planning department. But that is based on the architectural plans is five feet. Corner of the garage to the corner of the deck.
What's the height of the deck? Just out of curiosity, above grade?
It's about, again, I, I would have to confirm on site what is there because we're not, that's just not in the scope for the garage. It's a, about 20, it's about 26 inches above grade.
It seemed higher than that, but.
Eric, I don't know if you could speak to that, you're.
I, the, I'm not so good at estimating the specific heights. I should mention, we didn't change the dimensions of, of the deck in the remodel. The reason that we had to change it was that there was, there was a hot tub in the middle of it that we removed. And so we otherwise built it exactly as it previously was. Of course, being able to fit two cars in the garage is more important to us than the specific size of the deck. So if that is an issue. You know, we would address it ideally by. Expanding the garage and adjusting the deck as needed.
Yeah, unfortunately, what we don't have is plans that show us where the deck is in relation to. For us to, to take a look at. I'm 6'3" and not a skinny fellow. And walking back there, I could see walking into the corner of the roof line, whether, especially if you're dealing with an older property. And on all the roof, the roof lines tend to be a little bit lower. And so. I'm just worried that someone, you have guests over, or, you know, your kid, frankly, your kids, when they get to be six or seven or eight. It's a launching pad onto the roof, but you know, that's a different thing. I'm, I'm more concerned with people either walking through there, getting whacked in the head. Or on the corner, standing there, you know, talking, you have a nice backyard, side yard, you know, having a cocktail or something. And kind of turn and, and whack it. If you think it is, and we don't have any rules or regulations relating to how far that is. You know, I guess there's nothing that we can specifically do, but I am concerned. Of that deck, because it just, to me, looked a little bit too close to where the, the new, you know, if you add a couple of feet. Plus the roof line being lower, potentially, that, that could be a head hazard.
Commissioner Bishop, so I did look at the originally approved plans for this, for the structure. For the addition to the main house. And in that area of the, of the deck, the finished floor height is two feet, four inches. So it is 28 inches above grade per the approved plans from the DRC. And it does reflect that the deck is in a similar location as previously. I do not have the building print plans, but I do have the planning plans for it. I can always show this to you if you like.
And just to add to that on G A13, it might be lights you can't see. Underneath those exposed rafters, the dimension is eight foot, one inch. The slope of the roof is, it's not a steep roof. So. That's like a, that, just for that dimension, at the lowest point.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah, Chair, I have a, I, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, so a question for the designer or architect. I, I actually drove by and dropped by there today, and I noticed at the corner, there's a power pole. And with the overhead wire running both direction along the property line. So my question is that, have you done a survey? And second, is there an easement? On either side or both side along the property line? Because that's, garage is right under those power line.
We do not have a survey for the garage and there is no easement.
You sure about it? There's no easement?
Um, yes, I, it would have been on the site plan. Unless. Not, but I can double check that.
Okay, I, I assume that existing is already there, but I'm not sure if. If there's an easement. I'm not sure if that's. Any expansion to that. I mean, I've never seen that. That's why I want to mention about the survey and the easement. See if anyone checked on that part.
I'm checking that right now, Commissioner Romo, one second. I should have something in a moment.
Sorry, I was muted. So I will continue to look for, I did find it, but there was a previous lot. A lot subdivision for that, and I will find that subdivision application to check that. Because this lot was originally combined with the home next door. So it was subdivided. So we do have civil drawings for it. It'll just take a moment for me to find it if I can.
Okay. Thanks, Sean.
Any other questions, Michael? Why are you looking for that?
No, no, that's, I mean, otherwise, I, I think the, the garage expansion, the, the design, I have no question. Yeah.
Okay. Sean, should we move to public comments or should we wait?
No, I, I would recommend going to public comment and then I will find, there's a lot line adjustment. I just found it. One second. Just found it. Well, I mean, it does show the overhead wire along the left front of the garage, but it does not. Call out on the civil drawing an easement. I can share that if you'd like to see it, but it, it does not, it does show an overhead wire. But it does not call out on the lot line adjustment drawing that was. Recorded, that was approved by the planning division back in. 2007. It does not reflect any easement at that corner. There's no easement within that immediate adjacent area.
Right. That's good. Thanks, Sean. Check in on that.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close that portion up and open it up to public comments. So. If there's anyone who. Has a public comment on this item, Sean, do your thing.
Yeah, if there is a member of the public who would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. If you're not able to raise your hand. Please unmute yourself and provide us your name. I, I do not have any members of the public. We don't have many that have raised their hand and no one has muted themselves. So we appear to not have any public comments.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and open up for commissioner discussion. Anyone want to begin? Michael, why don't we have you start?
Sure. Sure. I, I believe, I mean, this is historical, which I understand. And the needs for a two car garage is historical, is maybe, I don't know, 80, 90, 100 years old. So the, the previous design is no longer for today's vehicular dimension and use. So I believe the variance is very reasonable from the owner, you know, to have a decent car garage, you know, two car garage, that's minimum for any of the house here. So and then the design, it's, you know, actually cutting back the area and expanding to the, to the width to accommodate two car. And everything, it's, it's matching, pretty much matching the existing or the historical aspect. And especially when through the, all the requirements. So I fully support the design. Very good, you know, design. Thank you.
Okay, Jude?
Kind of along the similar lines, I believe the request for variance is reasonable. And within the rights of the applicant, given the situation, especially given the historical nature. I am, you know, but it would have been interesting to hear a little bit of discussion about a possible new garage off the alley. But it looks like there's quite a bit of development in the other corner of the property, which would be, you know, very impactful. Upon the use of the property. So expanding the garage, I think, is reasonable. What I am concerned about is the, first of all, the quality, the quality of the drawings is. Not the best. So it's not clear to us, especially how the garage addition relates to the deck. In my understanding, the deck is considered a structure, given the height off the ground. Maybe Sean can clarify that. But in my view, I don't want to approve something that's not in, in not in compliance with the planning code. So there potentially could be another variance here that hasn't been discussed, a variance for reduced setback between structures. So Sean, can you kind of expand on that? And, and by the way, from the Google image, it looks like there's seven or eight stairs leading up the deck. I, I only peeked over the fence from what I saw, so I wasn't on property. But from what I see from Google, the deck appears to be quite high.
Let me see, I've lost you guys one second. Sorry. Oh, there you are. Sorry, you got buried. Um, again, I mean, and regarding the, the setback, you know, staff. Gosh, I'm like losing things. I apologize. From staff's perspective, yes, a pergola is considered, is considered part of the structure. That's a question I. I don't really have an answer because typically we measure this off the foundation of the home. And we do allow for exceptions for decks. I don't have a clear answer. I'd have probably have to research that. Steve, did you have an answer to that maybe?
Yeah, so under 15, sorry, 14.15.050. It says. Now I'm trying to figure out how this is positioned because. Is this structure in the rear yard?
Yes, it is.
So. It says when a structure is located in a required side yard. There's, there's some differences in the separation and. There is an allowance for the clearance between the accessory structure and the main structure. Or between the accessory structure and the property line. But that's if it's in a side yard. In the rear yard. The minimum clearance. Is 10 feet between the accessory structure and the main structure and five feet between accessory structures. So. I think we'd have to take a, a little closer look at that and get some more specific measurements if that is an issue.
Okay, yeah, because my, my recollection is. You have the deck and it goes up, I guess, two and a half feet or whatnot. Then you have the railings going up another, you know, three feet. With probably four buys. And then I, if I recall, metal wiring or something to that effect. Whether I might, maybe incorrect on that. So from base to probably the top of the handrail. Is probably six feet. Maybe five and a half feet.
Yeah, and then in general, structures up to six feet are not really considered accessory structures. They're exempt from, from the accessory structure standards. So. It's potentially not, not, we wouldn't consider it an accessory structure.
Eric, I see your hand. We'll, I'll get to you. Just hold on a second while we work through this. Thank you.
Look at this code section, sorry.
We'll have an answer in a second. So, so the thing is that, so the complexity of this is that the municipal code that's speaking to. Except distance between structures is only referencing distance between structures when they're located in a side yard. Or they're located in a rear yard. Accessory structures are not allowed in front yards. That's, that's part of the variance that we acknowledged in, that's what, what's part of what we acknowledged in the staff report was that one. Is a non-conforming setback at the front. And then two, accessory structures are not permitted in a front yard. The municipal code does not establish a minimum separation between an accessory structure in a front yard. And the house, because it's not supposed to be there. So there is no established rule stating that there is a minimum clearance. Because typically these structures are not allowed. Now, if we look at what is being proposed. You know, they are providing a minimum 12 foot clearance. It is less to the, to the deck. But there isn't a non-compliance with specific regulation because there isn't one that applies to this condition. It's, it's unexpected and. And unless the commission believes that it creates potentially, you know, if we look at the variance findings. If you believe that it, that it creates a potential issue that, let's look at the findings really quick for you. So unless we can have, unless there's a concern, the granting of the variance will be detrimental to health and safety. Or the welfare of persons in the vicinity or injuries to property or improvements. We, you know, even if we were to try to pursue a variance, we, we don't have a, a code section to pursue for variance. Because there's not a minimum separation, which is what you're stating. That doesn't exist for a front yard structure. That's per code.
So Sean, just to clarify, university is considered front yard, Lee is considered side yard. Does this fall into, wouldn't this be?
Lee is considered the front yard, university is, yes, Lee is the front and university is the exterior side.
Okay.
So when we are looking at, so when we're looking at minimum separation between structures, it's under the accessory structure regulations. Because there's a minimum separation between an accessory structure like a garage from the main house. However, the way the council wrote the regulation was that the minimum separation is only applicable if the accessory structures in. The side yard and the rear yard where they're supposed to be. Because accessory structures are not allowed in front yards, but in this particular case. It's here because it's historic structure and it's been there since nineteen eleven. So there isn't a zoning code is not compliant with, with the exception of it's a nonconforming structure that is in a location. Which is not permitted. They are allowed to continue in that same location as long as they're. Not comply, as long as they're not increase the intensity of the nonconformity, which the nonconformity is applicable to this. Would only be setbacks and height and or daylight plain. Separation doesn't apply to the structure because there is no separation requirement for a structure in a front yard. So there's. There's not a basis in the code for you to deny it based on a minimum separation code, noncompliance issue. I'm sorry for it. It took long. I had to wrap my head around that a little bit.
Well, we want to get it right, so. Okay.
I I can carry with Sean's interpretation and. Of the code section as well, and that's why. It matters what, where it is on the property because there's different requirements for different yard locations.
Definitely Lee is the front and university is the side.
And that is established in previous DRC approvals and it's based on the Lee side being the narrowest frontage for the definitions for what is a front lot line.
Yeah, so Lee's one hundred and thirty-two and university's one fifty. It's a little light.
Yeah, there's also. Perpendicular to Lee or I'd say opposite of university, they don't have the rear yard setback. Whereas they do opposite of Lee Street, so you'd create. A more nonconforming lot if you considered university to be the front.
So when it, when it comes to corner lots and you have lots that are a hundred feet in either direction, then you're allowed, as you're all aware, to rotate. Front to either side. But if if they're both over a hundred, then the applicant has the choice of either option, but staff. Will only approve one option if it results in the least number of nonconformities. And so if we were to rotate it. To being on university, which we've gone through this before, you would end up with a greater number of nonconformities than you would having an on lead. So we choose the one that creates the least number of nonconformities and that was. Determined in previous designer view approvals. To this project and that's what kind of, the previous variance that you had followed that kind of practice of establishing Lee as the front.
I'm gonna go ahead and, as I said that I would, Eric, you had your hand raised. I don't know. If you still have a question or a a pointer. You wanted to get on record, but go ahead if you want.
I was just going to mention that the front was actually on Lee. So.
Okay.
We got that discussion now.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Uh, where were we? So Jude, I think you were.
Yeah, I I think, well. Compliments to Sean and Steve for having this extreme knowledge because these. What I think the the DRC's biggest concern, first of all, once again, at this point, I think there is a. A. An agreement that this is adjustable viable variance. We just want to make sure we're technically correct and not creating another issue. And I I would be personally be concerned about the separation distance. For numerous reasons. But if 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 we're going to proceed, assuming staff has reviewed this. And deemed it to be in technical compliance, then I'm going to follow staff's recommendation. Given their knowledge, but it's a very complicated. Even though this is probably the most simplest structure we've ever reviewed in all my years of the DRC and I've been here a lot. I can tell you. That it it's much more complicated than it appears on the surface. So I'm gonna. Mute myself now and pass the baton on to to whomever.
Frank, any comments?
I had to unmute myself, sorry. No, I think, you know, from a design, I know we're here for the variance and. I think technically that's been pretty well discussed. But with my design review hat on, again, I think the facade of this building, if they're gonna go forward and make it as nice as they're going to make it, a new door would be a. Reasonable thing for them to consider. Other than that, I'm. Is some of you know, a historical buff, I'm glad that they're not knocking it down or moving it because it's actually, there's a reason that it was put there. Sometime long before all of us, and so hats off for actually trying to keep it. And I I think, you know, I'm I'm for the project, basically. You know, I I figured that the staff has done all the technical checks. I'm just gonna let that part go, but I do think you could improve it with. Doors that look more period correct than something from the eighties that could be from, you know, a development down in San Jose. I think that would make a big difference in the the look of the building.
Thank you, Frank.
Sure.
Uh, Sam, any comments?
Uh, no, I'm in favor of the project. No comments.
Yeah, I am as well. Do we have a motion?
I'll move that we adopt. Victor twenty-two dash zero 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 two. Seven twenty-five. Avenue findings and conditions. For approval.
Okay, we got. Could you repeat the variance number in the DR?
Yeah, variance twenty-two. The Victor twenty-two dash zero 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 two. Seven two five University Avenue.
Okay, I've got a different number. Does anyone else have a different number? Am I?
You have a different number of the variants?
Yeah, I've got it. V twenty dash zero 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 one and DR twenty-two dash zero zero nine eight.
I don't. I just have that singular. Victor twenty-two zero 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 two.
Oh, I see. Sorry. There's a difference between the agenda. And.
Yeah, the agenda and the actual.
Eight o'clock before it was dark at eight o'clock.
So on the actual. Item. We use those numbers.
Uh, is that acceptable to us?
Well, you it's only, it's not fully out, I don't believe. The subject is, the subject is, the variances. B two zero dash zero 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 one and DR twenty-two dash zero zero nine eight. For the property at seven twenty-five university. So I'll I'll make that motion to approve the variance. And the design review, so variance twenty dash zero zero one and. Design review twenty-two dash zero zero nine eight, submit to the attached findings and conditions.
A second.
I have a motion in a second. Let's go ahead and vote. Commissioner Bishop.
Aye.
Commissioner Harding.
Aye.
Commissioner Kirk.
You'll.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Ma.
Aye.
You got the vote, okay, and. Chair Blockis as well, the pass is five to zero. Congratulations, took a little bit longer, but thank you for your patience.
Blockis, can you confirm the second? I'm sorry, some somebody was texting me. Was the motion in the second?
No, so I was the motion.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Harding was the second.
Thank you so much.
And just for the record, I believe the application number is. Variant V twenty-two dash zero 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 two. This, I think, had a previous variance in. Two thousand twenty, but that's a different application number.
Well, that's what's on my meeting.
Yeah, I, because there's multiple. This project, I think, when it was verified. Like by address, there's just multiple applications over the years. So the current one is V twenty-two dash zero 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 two. So we apologize for that on the agenda report.
Okay, should we have a redo?
I I don't think it's necessary, it's just a script there and.
Okay.
We'll correct that in the approval minutes.
Okay. Excellent. So congratulations to the Alberts. It, you're you're passed, you're ready to go and also congratulations on the addition to the family.
Yes.
All right, let's go ahead and move.
Thanks so much.
Yep. Go ahead and move on to. Our number number three, property eleven eighty Saint Charles. Heading SC twenty-two dash zero 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 five. Staff, do we have? Steve, can we have the report on that?
Yes, I'll give a presentation. I'm gonna turn off my video. My computer has been running slow and very hot, so. Can you see on screen right now?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so this is a designer review application for a first and second story addition to an existing single story residence. The project includes adding fifty-three square feet to the first story and a new. Five hundred sixty-two square foot second story. This is somewhat of a unique project for the design review commission in that it's converting. Four hundred, almost four hundred and sixty square feet of the existing first floor of the residence. Which is highlighted and hatched on the left-hand side. And then the entire. Five hundred sixty-two square foot proposed second story, those two combined will. Result or be converted into an accessory dwelling unit or ADU as most people call them. And most of the ADUs that this commission has seen on applications before. Are considered state exempt ADUs and they're not subject to your discretion. But in this case, since the ADU is above sixteen feet in height. It doesn't qualify as a state exempt ADU and it is not exempt from discretionary review. So per the Los Altos zoning ordinance, since it has a second story being proposed. It is subject to design review approval by this designer review commission. So just wanted to give you that background for you and. The public's awareness. But going back to where this project is located, it's at eleven eighty Saint Charles Court. The subject property is located towards the end of that cul-de-sac street. The neighborhood is best defined as a consistent character neighborhood according to the city's residential design guidelines. The residences in this area share common lot sizes. Front yard setbacks and nearly all the residents have attached front-facing garages. Also, this slide shows the front elevation of all those residences or. The residences close to the subject site. You can see that they're a mixture of one and two-story residences with similar wall plate heights at the first and second stories. About eight-foot plate heights. They have mostly retained their front facade aesthetics. Architectural detailing and they have very common exterior materials consisting of stucco wood and brick materials. So on the screen right now is the proposed site plan, which was included in the design plans. You can see here that the proposed addition at the first and second stories. Is shown in the crosshatch areas. It's generally at the right rear side of the existing residence when viewed from the street. And the proposed first story addition will be located further away from the property lines. The than the existing structure, therefore that first story setbacks are being maintained. The proposed second story structure, second story exceeds. The front and side yard setbacks as shown on the table at the top right-hand side. You'll note that the existing rear yard setback is actually nonconforming per the submitted survey. It has roughly a three-inch encroachment into the rear yard. Where a twenty-five-foot setback is required. And normally, when there's a nonconforming setback and structural components are being rebuilt. We generally require that portion of the structure to be brought into conformance per the zoning ordinance. But here, because it's such a minor encroachment. We believe that this is a de minimis impact or a negligible impact. To the required yard area. So if the applicant and owner is going to save the foundation. We believe that we should, this encroachment can be. Maintained again as a de minimis impact and we've added a condition. Number two be to recognize this nonconformity. With regards to the elevations, this is the proposed front and rear elevations on the slide. The low scaled one-story hip roof forms in the front will be maintained. And then that second story addition will be added to the sort of rear portion. When viewed from the front, it's that close to the the ridge roof, existing ridge roof. The proposed roof structure. Is of that second story element is a a front and rear facing gable. The new roof forms have a five-twelve pitch. Which is same or similar to the existing roof structure. And the overall height of the proposed structure is twenty-three point seven feet, so it's within the twenty-seven foot maximum. The applicant is proposing. Nine-foot wall plate heights on the first story within the ADU area. And also on the second story and I apologize, I think the agenda report said eight. Eight-foot wall plates on the second story, but it's actually nine-foot plates. So given the relatively small facing front gable and the proposed nine-foot wall plate heights, which is. Very comparable to the existing eight-foot wall plate heights. Staff believes that this massing of the second story is minimized and it integrates fairly well into the existing structure. And is in keeping with the surrounding neighborhood. Moving on to the side elevations. The bottom elevation is the west or left-facing elevation. With the second story is, it's nearly fifty feet from the left side property line. Given the distance and the small windows and the tall window sill plate heights. We don't believe that there is any potential for unreasonable privacy impacts as. The east or right side elevation is in the top image. And if I can remind any members of the public to mute yourself, that'd be helpful. Again, the top image is the right elevation or the east side. On the first story, you can see the entry into the ADU. And then on the second story, there are three small windows towards the rear. With fairly tall five-foot window sill heights. Those are for the bedroom. And I believe the stairwell area, there's another small window. And sort of the central portion of the building that has four-foot window sill heights, which is located in the bathroom. And then the medium-sized window, which is on the left side or towards more of the front portion of. The side elevation, it has three and a half foot. High window sills. But with regards to sort of privacy impacts of the right side neighbor. You can see here in in this image with the picture number one, you can just barely see. That there is a left, the on the left side of that buddy neighbor. It's a large gable, it doesn't have any windows on that side. And there's also a a number of tall plants on on that. On that side. On that side yard area as well. Um, the neighbor did provide correspondence supporting the project with no noted concerns for privacy or otherwise. Um, we did receive two other correspondences from surrounding neighbors and support of the project. Um, I should also mention, and I apologize, it wasn't included in the gender report. But the applicant or, or I should say the property owner. Um, confirmed with staff through an email that they reached out to eight other property owners. And met with three of them. And they did not note any, uh, concerns. Um, with that being said. And consistent with the design view guidelines, staff is recommending that the existing shrubs along the right. Side yard area in the vicinity of the second story addition. Be replaced with evergreen screening material, um, that will grow taller than the existing. Um, again, on the subject site property. Uh, because they're the ones that are actually doing the, the second story addition in this case. We've added that condition in, uh, the approval, the conditions of approval as condition two A. And it's also at the discretion of the commission if you think that, uh, the added screening vegetation. Uh, would help further reduce any potential privacy impacts. Uh, and then just to note. The, at the rear, which is, um, shown in these images on the screen now. There is a, a fairly large elevation change to the rear properties, abutting properties to the rear. It's about a five to six feet, um, elevation change, and there is a good neighbor fence on top of that. And there's also vegetation, including some large trees. And image number three, uh, those are redwood trees at the left side. And there's some other vegetation shown in, um, image number two. Uh, at the, at the rear area. So we don't believe that there is any unreasonable privacy impact towards the rear. Uh, this is just sort of a perspective, um, or three D image of the final product they're using. They're going to be replacing the roof with a composition shingle roof. The first story is going to be stucco exterior and a horizontal, uh, horizontal fiber cement siding on the second story. So with that, staff is recommending an approval of the designer view application SC twenty-two dash zero 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 five. Subject to the listed findings and conditions on the agenda report. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Great, thank you, Steve. Uh, commissioners, any questions for Steve?
None from Sam.
Michael, Frank, dude.
I, I have a question for Steve.
Go ahead, Michael.
Um, I, I, this is kind of zone cool. I'm just curious. Uh, on A six on the elevation, Steve. The daylight plan, um, since there's an ADU. So the daylight plane here doesn't show all the way, the daylight. This already the south front elevation. So the daylight planes kind of cut off. I'm wondering if the daylight plane should be used, um. The, the daylight plane should be the ADU daylight plane, not the. Single family daylight plane, right?
Um, so in this case, because it's a discretionary ADU. The ADU ordinance says that, um, if it doesn't, if. In this, in this case, if it's over sixteen feet in height, then all other zoning ordinance, um. Standards apply within this district. So in this case. The normal. Daylight plane for the, for the house would apply. If it was just a ADU. Um, a, a sort of the state just, um, the state exempt ADU, then we would apply that daylight plan. But it, it doesn't. In, in fact, it, it wouldn't really matter because if you look at the ADU daylight plane, um, it, it stops at some point, so. It would be compliant with that one as well.
Okay, call it. Right, thank you, Steve.
Frank, any questions?
Uh, no questions at this time.
Jude?
No questions.
And I do not have any questions, so let's go ahead and move forward to. The applicant and or the architect for the applicant, if they want to make a presentation, it's your time.
Hello, I'm John Yu. I'm the applicant for this ADU. The ADU is for my, uh, daughter and family to move in. To take care of, um, my wife and I, so I would like my daughter Teresa. Uh, to, uh, speak before the commission.
Okay.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chair. I'm Teresa Yu and, um, as you've stated, my parents are the owners. Of the residence at eleven eighty Saint Charles Court. And they have been living at this residence for forty-eight years, um, and raised their four children here. Um, the purpose of this ADU addition. As my father mentioned, is to allow my parents to stay in their home for as long as possible. And allow one of their children to move in and live on site, um, to help to, to help with their daily living tasks. They enjoy being in the comfort of their home and, um, just blocks away from the church they've been attending for fifty years. For almost fifty years and close to their favorite activities, um, walking in the neighborhood and also at Rancho San Antonio. And going to, um, exercise at their local Y. And their home continues to be a center for our family gatherings and they have, um, several extended family members that live nearby. So all of their four children live in the Bay Area. At the age we anticipate, my parents will require more support. So my husband, myself, and my six-year-old daughter plan to move into the ADU unit under review. To offer help where we can and organize any additional support needed. And our, our, the architect Mike Beerhouse, uh, Veris will provide more details on this project.
Great, thank you. Mike, you're up.
Thanks, Teresa. Uh, excuse me. Um, I think, uh, Steve did a good job as far as, uh, breaking it down and why it's. Not your typical ADU, but we worked with all within the guidelines and, uh. I think we, uh, I think we, what can I say? I think it works. Uh, if you have any questions, I'm here. The one thing he did mention, Steve mentioned that the plate heights on the upper floor are nine. I think maybe the confusion is the bathroom and the closet, if you look at those elevation, those plate lines are eight. So upstairs, part of it's eight foot, part of it's nine. So that's probably, um, maybe where that confusion came from.
Okay, anything else?
Uh, the, um, I would say the window that faces the neighbor that has no windows, the gable house on the, to the right. That has no windows on that side that we're talking about adding screening. Uh, that bedroom window up above that has the forty-two inch sill. That's because of egress for that bedroom upstairs. Uh, we could not raise that and meet the egress requirements. And I don't think we have a chance to make the window that's facing the street meet the egress because of the existing roof line. Uh, that's coming up against it. So we, we, we made it as high as we could and still meet the egress.
Ready for questions?
I'm ready for questions.
I didn't know if you were done or.
No, I'm done. I'm done. I'm, I'm here for questions.
Okay, uh, commissioners, any questions for the architect or the applicant?
My only question is, Mike, uh, you know, a door from the house to the ADU. It seems like a perfect case to have a internal door.
Not a bad idea.
City allows it, I believe. Does it not, Sean or, uh, Steve?
Yes, uh, a door between the two units would be allowed.
Okay, I, I mean.
Well, there's opportunity for that under the stairs, so there is a possibility for that. We, we kind of talked about that, but I wasn't sure. In the rulebook here, if, uh, somehow that door was going to cause any problems with the ADU size or anything like that. But if I, I could easily put a door there, uh, under the stairs that would access, and I think that would be useful instead of having to go around the front to get in.
Well, it's beyond our purview, but I, I think I encourage you, I think we all encouraged you to include that door and maybe the city can clarify that. For future applicants, so they can include it.
Okay, thanks. That's a good idea.
Frank, any questions?
I'm, I'm good at this point. Thank you.
Okay, Michael?
I don't have any question.
Thank you. Sam, any questions?
No questions.
And I don't have any as well, so. Go ahead and close that off and, um. Do we have any, uh, Steve, any public comment on this item?
So I was trying to. I need, um. So at this time, if there are any public comments, um, you can raise your hand and if we. If you can't find your hand to raise, you can also unmute yourself if you can provide your name. That'd be helpful for the record. I don't currently see any hands raised. If anybody would like to unmute themselves to speak on this. Item, you can at this time. And I'm not hearing anybody either.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and open it for commissioner discussion. Who would like to begin?
I'll go, yeah.
Go ahead.
All right. I'm gonna get my, mine in. This is the second to last meeting here. So, uh, great use of the ADU concept, uh. I commend, uh, the property owner, homeowner, forty-seven years. That's awesome. And the ability for the extended family to come on board and use the tools that the state is providing us. It's a great. Uh, illustration of what an ADU should be. So I am all in favor of this. And, uh, I, good luck on the project. Look forward to many years of you enjoying your home.
Sam?
Yeah, uh, same as Jude, uh, it's just, uh, very encouraging to have. Uh, the cooperation in family members to, to do this. It, uh. It's a, it's a nice thing to come before us and to approve, uh, in our way of doing it. So. Uh, I'm in favor of the project.
Frank?
Oh, I think it's a, it's a great design. I think it's great to put the family under one roof. It's been mentioned earlier. So, uh. Yeah, I'm in favor of it. Looks good.
Michael?
Yes, um, same comments with other commissioner. Um, nice design, you know, minimum impact to the neighbors and, uh, very reasonable, very good, um. Uh, fit into the existing, um, so I fully support the project.
And I support the project as well. Uh, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion based on my, uh, design review agenda, which is SC twenty-two dash zero 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 five. One-one-eight-zero Saint Charles Court. Um, finding, listing findings and conditions approval.
Second.
And second by Michael. Let's go through their list. Frank?
Hi.
Michael?
Hi.
Jude?
Hi.
Sam?
Hi.
And David, I as well. The motion, the project passes five to zero. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye. Bye-bye.
We go ahead and move on to item number four, uh, SC twenty-two dash zero 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 seven. For the property at fourteen oh five Highland View Court. Uh, Sean, can we have staff report, please?
Yes, I'm just setting it up once again, sorry.
Okay.
Oh, come on. Um. Uh, good evening, Chair Blockus and Commissioners. The project for tonight is a designer review application for a one-story. Six hundred and fifty-eight square foot addition, conversion of a second-story workshop to habitable space. Um, second story and first story window changes, a new balcony at the second story and exterior modifications to an existing two-story house. Um, the property is located on a corner, at the corner, um. Of Eva and Highland, uh, View Courts. Again, the applicant is proposing a six hundred and fifty-eight, uh, square foot one-story addition. Um, the addition proposes, uh, five hundred square feet, uh, along the exterior side frontage along Highland View Court. Uh, this would be considered the front on Eva Avenue. Uh, a hundred and fifty-eight square foot addition is proposed along the interior side of the property. Um, uh, the existing fir- first story is, uh, located, um. Uh, eighteen point two feet from the rear setback where twenty-five feet is required per the zoning code. Set, setback accro- accrochments, um. Appeared to have been created at the time of construction of the house, um. And is therefore considered a legal non-conforming structure. This project is, will not be eliminating more than fifty percent of the floor area. Uh, the non-conforming setbacks can be ma- maintained. Um, the front lot line again is on Eva Avenue exterior side of Highland. Uh, the proposed structure does comply with the exception of the rear with the, uh, setbacks for the R-one-ten zoning district. Um, again, this kind of, uh, the red areas reflect the locations of the proposed addition. Uh, this is the five hundred square foot addition facing, uh, the frontage and then this is the interior side. So this is the exterior.
Sean, if I can interrupt, we're not seeing any.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. Let me go back, apologize.
There you go.
Do you see it? Okay.
Yep.
So what I had shown before was that this was. This is Highland View and this is Eva. It's on a corner which the commission's aware of. Um, again, Eva is the front. This is the exterior side of proposing an addition facing Highland View. With a hundred and fifty square foot addition off the exterior side or interior side. Um. This is a floor plan, uh, and this shows proposed location of the five hundred square foot addition. Facing Highland View and again, this is the interior side addition of a hundred and fifty-eight square feet. Um, I am, sorry, move this out of the way. The design proposes a conversion of the existing second story to habitable space. Uh, originally, this was approved as a workshop. This is the existing second floor. And this is the proposal, which includes a bedroom and bathroom and closet and then an office space with a balcony off of it. Um, the, uh, this would result in larger windows on the interior side, shifted windows. And additional windows on the front and rear and new balcony over the existing one-story portion of the house. There we go. Along the exterior side, north side, uh, facing, um, the frontage. The applicant is proposing at the first story, again, the five hundred square foot addition, which is in yellow. Uh, converging, a conversion of an existing recessed porch, which previously was here. Uh, into a part of the addition, removal of the original wainscoting, uh, that is located here. And replacement with board and batten, which matches the original, uh, design. Uh, replacement of three windows at the first story, um. Uh, with, uh, four windows or a series of additional windows along the front to match. The existing facade. Um, the new addition again incorporates a taller plate heights that vary from eight to ten feet. Above finished floor maintains existing roof pitches, incorporates materials already found on the home. Along the second story, um, two windows with, uh, a three-panel sliding door is proposed exiting onto a two-hundred square foot balcony. Uh, the red reflects the location of the balcony area. Um, and this again is oriented towards the public right of way on Highland View Avenue and also Eva Avenue. This is the interior side, um, and this is a proposed and this is existing. Uh, the applicant is proposing this hundred and eight fifty-eight square foot addition, which is located in the yellow area. Um, the new addition incorporates a taller plate heights that again maintains similar materials as the existing structure. As reflected here, it originally had, uh, uh, three two-panel sliding doors and one window. It is now replacing it with a larger four-panel sliding door and then two, uh, larger windows. Along the frontage, the windows, of course, are in blue. Along the, along the rear. Along the, along the rear elevation where previously there were two windows facing of, of similar size, they are now replaced with larger windows. Uh, some with lower sill heights, um, than the previous design. Again, this is facing an interior side, uh, property line. Um. And, um, sorry, my cat's crying. And then along the existing front elevation, uh, which is along Eva. They are proposing a replacement of the existing windows with smaller windows. Uh, in the living room to match, um, to match the new window style. Uh, this includes where previously there was. One, a medium-sized window and one larger, uh, window, uh, and the garage doors. They're replacing it at the first floor when one, one larger panel window and the new garage door. At the second story, the three, uh, windows, two of equal size are being replaced. With one smaller sized window and one, a single panel, uh, uh, window, uh, that has shifted its location along the elevation. Along the proposed rear elevation, where originally there was a proposal for, uh, five, uh, windows. The applicant, or originally it was built with five windows. The applicant is proposing. To retain, uh, this window with slightly larger and then to a narrower and taller windows with slower sills at the first story. At the, uh, second story, um, there are, uh, similar sized windows being proposed. Uh, in generally similar locations, so there are slight modifications to locations. Uh, staff, uh, finds that the proposed first story addition and exterior modifications. Uh, do appear to be compliant with the R one ten zoning district standards and design guidelines and design review findings. And overall, the facade and exterior side at the front and exterior side elevation windows appear of similar size placement. One second. Second. I kiss this consistent with past determinations pursuant to section fourteen seven six zero four zero. The zoning code new or modified secondary windows that have increased glazing or may create potential privacy impacts have been referred to the DRC for review. Um, which is partially why we have proposed this coming back to you in addition to the proposed new balcony along the front elevation. Um, a staff leaves that the, that the windows are, uh, of an appropriate shape and form and are compatible with the overall design of the home. Um, on state, page five of the staff report, staff wanted to note and air. Uh, where we reference the interior side as a rear, it is actually, uh, interior side on the south side. Um, and these were, and, and this is important because we're raising concerns regarding. The overall size of the windows and we also raised concerns regarding the potential, um, sill height of the windows. Um, uh, consistent, and then, sorry. On the exterior north side elevation of the second story, there, uh, again is a three-panel sliding door exiting from an office to a balcony. This deck is approximately seventeen feet by eleven and three-quarters feet and primarily faces the front and exterior side yards. Balcony size, uh, does not comply with the designer view guidelines, four-foot maximum balcony depth recommended by the design guidelines. And staff understands it may be perceived to be active in nature due to its depths. The section five point three of the residential design guidelines, uh, staff leaves is intended to ensure privacy reduction. For property owners along interior side and rear property lines. As, as staff knows that the balcony is oriented towards two public rights of ways Highland View Court and Eva Avenue. Uh, which ensures privacy to adjoining properties along the interior side and rear property lines. Due to the public, due to the balcony's views being oriented toward a public right of way. Uh, and section five point three of the residential design guidelines. Um, staff believes that, that there's not an intention to preserve privacy along a public right of way or along front yards of adjoining properties. So staff believes the proposed balcony will not create any potential privacy impacts neighboring to the neighborhood context. Including any active interior, your side yards or rear yards of the immediate neighborhood context. And staff, uh, finds that the project or recommends that the project does not maintain, does maintain reasonable degree of privacy. In regards to the interior side, um, to the interior side windows. Uh, staff does know that we, due to the, to the low sill height, which typically is recommended to be. A four and a half minimum sill height, staff, uh, does recommend that the windows, uh, be modified, uh, under condition, uh, two A. To, uh, revise to be no larger than the UBC and minimums, uh, size windows, uh, per the building code. The plans indicate that existing landscaping is to remain, uh, therefore staff has included a standard condition of approval that requires the applicant to maintain. Um, or provide new landscaping as needed, which will be inspected prior to final inspection. If the applicant in constructing this addition does result in the rehabilitation of more than twenty-five hundred square feet of landscaping. They will be required to comply with the water efficient regulations. This concludes staff's presentational serenity questions.
Great, thank you, Sean. Uh, Commissioners, any questions for Sean?
None. No question.
No question. Okay, I guess we have no questions. I had one. Um, so, Sean, in regards to the deck and. There's two lights on each side. That it faces a public right of way. Is that of any concern or regulation in regards to the lighting? Uh, as far as privacy?
No, and I, yeah, I, I think we've talked about this before. I mean, um, the city council has never established. Uh, standards in regards to lighting. Um, we have traditionally and the commission, I think, has traditionally pushed for them to have downward facing. Uh, shrouded lights, um, which, which the commission could request, but we do not have an established standard for lighting. Or, uh, any established standard regards to foot candles at property lines, which is common for a lot of. Jurisdictions to have a maximum foot candle at property lines of one foot candle. I'm sorry to say we lack that standard in the city.
Okay. Alright, so the questions I have, um, let's go ahead and move on to the applicant. The applicant and or their architect.
Um, hey, Commissioner, um, Asia. Hey, uh, my name is Paul and I'm the co-owner of the property. So I also have my wife Chelsea here. So just want to give a brief introduction of the property and the scope we're thinking of doing. Uh, so first of all, they moved to Los Otos, we moved from a smaller house to a bigger one. Single, since I'm starting a bigger family, um, at this house. And also similar to the previous house owners, we also would like to have our elderly parents, um, visiting and stay with us so we can offer a care for them. Um, so by increase of size of the property, um, that goal will be met. Uh, and also we're not only thinking about our goals, uh, we also want our property to fit nicely into the neighborhood. Um, but not, you know, causing any neighbors who raise their elbows every time they walk, um. You know, past our house. So we tried our best to, um, borrow kind of styles from the existing houses. Even for the color selection, my wife and our architect, uh, Jeannie have been working very closely, went through several iterations of the design. Um, to make sure we do not, you know, build a property that kind of doesn't fit into the property. In addition to that, we, um, went door to door and talked to ten to twelve neighbors. Um, we brought the panel that we printed out, explained to them in detail of, um, you know, in case they have questions, we answered all of them. Um, also after the outreach, we sent a PDF version of the property design to all of them. Um, and a few of them had questions on, hey, uh, what's the orientation? Um, you know, what's the direction of the, um, you know, the window and other stuff? Um, no bigger concern, no big concern from any of them, including the neighbor. Um, that the bigger windows are facing. So that's all. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, is your ar- architect here for anything or is that?
Yes.
Yes, um, good evening. Uh, this is Jenny Sun. I am the architecture designer of this project. Um, I think Sean did a great job and then covered, uh, most of the information. Um. I don't have specific presentation to show, but I'm happy, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Great, um, Commissioners, any questions for the applicants and or their architect?
None. No questions.
I have none.
Hey, I have a quick question. Um, uh, can the architect, uh, clarify some of the material? Uh, I'm looking at the material bore and the elevation. I know that, um, the primary exterior, uh, it's a. Uh, bore embedded or better than bore and also there is a horizontal siding. But I also noticed the vertical with siding. Um, but the. Can you clarify, are those gonna be the same vertical and horizontal siding? Is that the intent?
Um, so the vertical siding is on the existing garage site and we're, um. Keeping them as this right now. And then the building front has the board and batten and then for the addition, we're gonna keep the same, uh, material as well. And, uh, but the color, we're gonna change it to white. And then on the rear side of the, the, uh, uh, the house, it is a currently a horizontal siding, siding right now. And then same thing, we're gonna. Print it, uh, paint it to white and keep the existing, uh, architectural style.
I see. Okay, I got another question. This is the last question. Um, on the garage door, um, I sho- I see your elevation just shows some horizontal line. And, uh, your material bore show a garage with, uh, glass panel. Uh, can you clarify which one? Uh, I assume that you're gonna use the one show on the. But your board, is that gonna be, uh, what kind of material? Can you clarify more on the, with more information on the garage door?
Um, yes, so the garage door will be, um, something similar with the material board. Uh, apologize on the graphics, um, on the elevations, um, it's, uh, like a placeholder. So the material of the door, we're currently thinking about, um, either steel or wood, but the, the color will be, uh, dark gray.
Okay, alright, alright, thank you.
Okay, I actually have one question. Um, have you folks talked to? Um, the rear neighbor in regards to, uh, working on agreement or whatever, replace the fence?
Hey David, hey, uh, we have to answer the question, uh, the side. So we have, I think we have two neighbors, uh, neighboring our house. One is the neighbor on Eva Street. Um, the fence between us and them is relatively new.
Is new, yeah.
Yeah, and then there's another side facing the, uh, the neighbor on, uh, Highland View Court. I think that side of the fences are a little old. Um, so we do have one to, um, you know, build new fences.
Okay.
Yeah.
Have you spoken with them at all or no? Is, is, uh, something I would recommend?
Yeah, we haven't spoken to them yet, um, but we will be. Um, yeah, but like for us and them, we're like, we have very good relationships. So, um, we, we can talk with them as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then as. John had said, uh, the lighting on the deck, we can't. Require you to do something, but I would suggest or request that you do. You know, for the exterior downward lighting on the, the outdoor patio deck. But that's something completely up to you.
Yeah, and there's a, yeah, thanks for the recommendation.
Yep. Okay, I think all questions have been asked. We'll go ahead and open it up to public comment. Sean, do we have any? Folks just waiting to comment on this one?
Yeah, this is, uh, Don Metzger. I did raise my hand there. I'll lower it now. Uh, I just wanna. Not only introduce myself, uh, again, Don Metzger, I am the son-in-law. Of the owner of the house across the street on Highland View Court. Uh, fourteen oh six Highland View Court. Uh, as mentioned, this is my mother-in-law. My wife and I have been married nearly thirty years. Uh, prior to COVID, we relocated her. To our primary residence, uh, in Utah, which is where I'm calling in from now. Uh, she's ninety years old, but has been there in the neighborhood and on that cul-de-sac for. Uh, close to fifty years, uh, outside of the introduction. And although we have not had a chance to meet personally, uh, our new neighbors. Uh, I will say, uh, that their efforts in communication. Uh, presentation, uh, outreach has been, uh, received as very respectful. I think it's been professionally delivered. Uh, the neighbor that you were referring to with the shared fence behind. Uh, Donna and Darwin, we know them very well, again, for nearly. You know, three decades, um, and, uh, we think well of, of their proposal. And I just wanted to go on record tonight on behalf of, again. My mother-in-law June and, uh, the efforts that they've made here as the new owners to. Improve the property and everything that we've seen and outlined and the comments been made tonight. Meet with our approval. So thank you for allowing us the time. And, uh, this two-hour session's been a little bit of a wear for all. But, uh, I did wanna dial in and make sure I participated and offered those comments and. I do look forward to meeting you when I'm back in. I come in periodically for work. So anytime you see the, uh, green Mercedes outside of the garage, you know I'm home, always come over and say hello.
Great, yeah, thank you for the kind words, though. Definitely looking forward to meeting you in person. I think this is our first in-person meeting, right? So.
That it is. Cheers.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for calling in. Sean, any other public comments?
Um, there are no other hands raised. If there is a member of the public who cannot raise their hand, if they would like to mute themselves and provide us their name, providing your name is optional. Um, nobody has unmuted themselves. It appears we have no additional speakers.
Okay, we'll go to. Our conversation. Um, Michael, would you like to begin?
Sure, sure, I'll begin. Um, you know, it's fairly straightforward, a project for a second story addition. I mean, the, um. Uh, concrete addition and this second floor addition for the balcony. Um, I mean, everything is compliant. I don't see any big issue. The, 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 the privacy impact is minimal, um, the, even though the balcony is oversized. Uh, but it's facing the street, uh, facing the tree with the screening, you know, large tree in the front. And it's a corner intersection. So I don't have any issue with it. Um, the, uh, the new, the, the, along with the additional remodel, they can, uh, introduce new material. Which gonna improve the facade and then design of the old house. So I think it's a, it's a, it's a big improvement to the existing. So I fully, uh, support, uh, the project.
Great, thank you. Sam?
Yeah, I support the project and also, uh, to make a positive comment about Zoom meetings. Um, we wouldn't have had that, uh, neighbor discourse, uh, in an in-person meeting. So, uh, we often criticize our Zoom. Situation, but, uh, this was a positive, uh, Zoom experience. So I'm in favor.
Frank?
So I'm in favor as well. It's pretty straightforward. So.
Okay.
Yeah.
Uh, once again, I'm in favor. Uh, I just hope, uh, once again, the city moves towards some kind of light ordinance. Ordinance, cuz I think light is a concern. Um, I would highly recommend the applicant look into being sensitive to that issue. And, uh, I personally like the combination of in-person and Zoom meetings, Sam, just so you know. And I will, I will talk about that later there. So anyhow, I'm in favor of the project as designed.
Yeah, I, I as well. So no, no sense going on. Uh, do we have a motion?
I move.
Okay, Michael, go ahead.
But I move, uh, at the number, uh, C twenty two dash zero 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 seven. At fourteen oh five Highland View Court. By, uh, accepting all the listed, uh, findings and, um. Findings, um, and conditions, yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, let's go ahead and get roll on that. Frank?
Hi.
Sam?
Hi.
Jude?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
And David is I as well. So congratulation. The project passes 5-0. The projects that we have going right now, let's move on in our agenda. Do we have any Sean, any commissioner reports or comments?
No, I the we will have another meeting and on the 21st, so it should be a full agenda. And then the first meeting in October will be, should be the election of a new chair, vice chair.
Do we have? Do we have new commissioners lined up?
I am, I've been advised. I know they conducted interviews last week. Steve, do you know maybe now if they've appointed or selected anyone?
It was on the agenda last night, but they did not get to that item. So it will likely go back on September 20th to the city council.
Okay.
It was continued. It was continued. So they should take continued items first. And the next scheduled meeting would be September 20th.
I attended the council interviews and there was numerous applicants that did not attend. So it'll be interesting to see what happens.
So Jude, you're coming back.
There's an opening for you.
Unless unless you see me at City Hall, not coming back.
Okay. And Frank, are you? Is your term up or are you still? What is your status?
I don't plan to come back.
Okay, but does your term end?
It the first term ends, yes.
Oh, okay. Okay. So we'll, and I understand Sam and Michael, you're not up for.
Not yet. We got a little while longer. We got to get back to those in-person meetings first.
I missed the chamber, huh? Council chamber.
So any potential, I mean, potential agenda items?
Uh, no, no potential agenda items. I I should speak about returning to council chambers. I I have heard informally from the city clerk that it may not occur until like December or after December. I think there are a lot of technical complexities with the new high-tech system that they purchased that we're going to require lots of training to learn how to use their their sophisticated kind of system that they're using now, because everything will be recorded visual visually in addition to audio. Previously, we only did audio recordings for DRC.
Well, good. I guess.
Yes, that'll be coming up beginning of the year probably to go back to chambers potential.
Maybe Jude wants to stick around for that. You can be an ad hoc member.
I will be a watchdog. That's my, okay. That's my new role.
A consultant.
I'll be neutered by SB9, just so you know.
I like that image.
So do we have anything else? Don't think so. I'm going to go follow it. It's 8:56. We are adjourned. And everyone stay cool. We lost our AC three weeks ago. It was 9.